And six years, seven years, but I want four year rate up. That being said.
So is it, this is just for, this isn't just for the IEP, it's for anybody who's behind?
Yeah, correct. So there's two different programs. The rebound program is specifically for those with IEPs, and we have one special education teacher working with those. And then the student success program is for all students.
Okay. So in the classroom that I visited, there was four teachers in there. So one of them is just the IEP students?
So the classroom with the four teachers, that would be the student success program. With the rebound program, we talked with Mr. Chance, the one teacher.
Uh huh. Okay.
I think we have some planning or whatnot going on. There's only two teachers and then a teacher assistant for the student success program. So assessing those numbers and others.
Great, thank you.
Sounds like there's a good plan, of course. Look forward to seeing Rachel come across that stage.
Absolutely. And board members, I just wanted to thank Bruce and to thank Angie for the speed at which they worked to get this together. If you remember, these were conversations that we had with you in November and December. The program was set up late January into February. We know that there'll have to be some revisions made. When you move at this kind of speed, there's certainly some things that we could do better with giving more thought. And just continually improving the two programs is what we're going to be after, as we know better.
Yeah, thanks. I was impressed with this one.
Yeah, absolutely necessary.
Yeah.
I did have a question regarding summer plans. Are these students going to be involved in a strategic summer plan to try to also help regain some of these credits?
Absolutely. The work won't stop at the end of this school year. They'll go into summer with me. The hope is to get as many seniors graduated by the end of this little year, that your fourth day, so they can walk across the stage. But if not, they'll be in summer school.
Right, but I'm talking about the freshmen and juniors and sophomores, the ones that are in the student success.
The freshmen, sophomores, and juniors will have the opportunity to attend summer school. Did I answer?
Yeah. So how about the parental support? How's that going?
It gets, anyway, it's better. In the beginning, parents were, there was some resistance. But after the administration at school, the principal, as well as the counselors really explained the program and assessed it behind it, and really just laid it out, we ended up getting more support.
Same for us. We had parents come in and meet with the coordinator and the teacher. I was in some of those. I think part of it was going back to that original part about the presentation, where sometimes parents also don't understand how those credits are impacting the students. Not always understanding that if you fail something as a freshman, that you don't have those credits and you need to make those up. So just trying to educate them and get them on board. But generally, once they understood, they were fine.
And the kids are doing, the students themselves are taking to the program?
Yes, doing really well. That was the projection, like for us, around the 95% was out of those students. We have three that are struggling a bit, but the rest are doing very well.
I know we have these graduations, like Husky Academy and stuff. Huge turnout by the parents and family because they're so excited that their child is going to graduate, even though it's not the standard high school experience. So I think this is good if you can get the group at the high school, too.
Absolutely. And we really want this to be something for students that really need intervention. We don't want this to become a destination.
Right.
So really just being intentional around early warning indicators and working with the team over at the school. Spouse not working with the team over at the school to ensure that their inspecting wasn't expected as it relates to grades. And having those parental support meetings as necessary when we find that our students are following the most.
I have a quick question. So what about after? So like, do we have somebody talk to them? So like, what do they do after they graduate? You know, it's great to get them to the stage, but are we making sure that our counselors are working with them for what that next step is? Whether it be, you know, helping them get into somewhere for employment, or a trade school, or, you know, something the next?
So all of our students should have a four-year plan. And even though kids students are in the rebound program or the student success program, their four-year plan is still in place. So making sure that students understand that life, there is life after high school. So after you graduate, you're not finished. One of the things that I say to students all the time when I talk to them, and some may disagree, but I tell them that a career should be your focus and college is a choice. So basically, what that means is whatever the career is, and some of our students, per our instant data, they go right to work. Some of our students, they go right to the military. Some of our students go to two-year colleges, four-year colleges, and their universities. So whatever that career is, if college is necessary or a trade school is necessary, then we want to make sure that we provide you with as much education around that to ensure your success after high school. And we do have the 180-day follow-up that's heavily monitored. So there's staffing around that to where there's an individual that checks in after our students graduate to see what they're doing, so that we can monitor that as well, per episode five.
For students, okay, no, go ahead. For students with IEPs, there's also the transition planning that happens from the beginning. We're starting that even in middle school and making sure that they're on track for that as well. Talking about postgraduate goals and expectations.
Perfect. Thank you.
I was gonna say, as someone who enjoyed school but had no idea about going to college and no desire to, you know, going into the work field is a good motivator, because that's what I did. I worked in a grocery store in about February. I thought, I don't think I want to do this the rest of my life. I guess I'll go to college. So, you know, as long as they have something that they can, you know, other than just sitting at home and watching TV.
Absolutely. And we heavily rely on our counseling team. We have a great counseling team at the high school. Leadership is great at the high school as well, to make sure that they're having those conversations with our students. So as long as that's happening, then whatever mode our students, whatever direction they go in, then they can definitely achieve that success.
No, I appreciate the program as well as the collaboration, especially with SSD. I'm assuming also that there's a process in this to kind of evaluate, to see if there is need, and to make sure that if you need resources, to keep us up to date, because I think it's a wonderful program.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Thomas. I think the only question I have, well, it's not even really a question, well, question, Thomas, is how, like, what are some of the sort of, I don't want to say red flags, but what are some of the indicators for a teacher to say? Because I love that idea of like, we don't want to make this a destination. So we don't want teachers to also have the mentality of like, oh, well, there's the rebound program. Right? So what's the shift in culture and mentality there of like, yeah, because the way, when you said that, I was like, I thought of it as like, when you go bowling, the little rail that pop up, right? That's how the program feels, like, oh, like, we're just going to make sure that you don't fall, you know, in the cutter. And so with that, how is that shift around teachers to really support students early so that, so that there isn't that mentality of like, oh, they're going to be able to go to that program?
Absolutely. And I think, you know, between the both of us, as well as the principal, Dr. Haywood, at the high school, we're kind of like data people. So one of the things that we endeavor to do is start utilizing the resources that we have available to us more. We have a wonderful resource called Pulse, and Pulse sends out alerts, lets you know about absenteeism, chronic absenteeism, lets you know teachers not updating their grade books and things of that sort. So as those alerts come to us, making sure that someone is using that data to have the conversation with the adults and our children that it's impacting. So doing a better job with that, that's one thing. And when I get the reports, they kind of fall off at a certain time. I don't know who's responsible. I was looking back at Dr. Harlan, but they're early. But definitely utilizing those resources. There are other EWIs, early warning indicators, that we should look at. Students not completing homework, could be, I'm not completing homework because I don't understand material. So how do we refer students to the appropriate resource, whether it be after-school tutoring, or whether we connect them with another adult in the building that they may have a good relationship with? Maybe a coach, maybe an instructional coach, maybe another teacher, so they can work on improving those grades. But we can't forget about the parent, making sure that there is intentional contact with the parent, not just an email or the phone call. Because sometimes things get lost in the middle of the night. It's nothing like the personal touch with that phone call.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Need a 5.09 LED lighting installation proposal. Mr. Dwight Lindhorst.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm excited to talk about one of our big projects related to Prop S. And of course, we can't reach our vision or our mission without proper facilities. And for equity statement, facilities should provide the best physical environment for looming to occur. And all district schools should provide consistent equitable environments. So thanks for the passing of Prop S. One of the planned projects is to install LED lighting in Ritter facilities. Last lighting upgrade was in 2002. That was moving from an older version of fluorescent lighting to the current version. LED lighting uses significantly less energy than the current fluorescent lighting we have. So that will save money. And in addition, LED bulbs last five to 10 times longer than fluorescent bulbs, so saves on replacement, and it saves maintenance employees' time. So it saves, saves costs two ways. In December, the board approved a resolution selecting GRP Wegman as a district provider of choice as an energy savings company. And I'd like to introduce Maya Wong and Bob Fogarty, both engineers with GRP. They're here tonight, in case you have any questions that I can answer. So they have completed a lighting assessment of the district, and they're recommending retrofitting interior fixtures with LED lights, replacing exterior fixtures, again, with LED fixtures, and installing motion sensors in classrooms, which will turn off, automatically turn off lights after a certain time. The scope of the work includes all 10 school buildings, classrooms, libraries, other instructional areas, hallways, stairways, offices, cafeterias, outside lighting that is attached to the buildings, as well as parking lot lights. So it'll be all of those areas that we haven't already retrofitted to LED. The only thing that maintenance really has taken care of is gymnasiums right now. Any contract for other district buildings, we'll bring back to you later. So we're just focusing on the school buildings at this point. Work can start in two to three weeks after the board approves it and we sign the contract. Again, that's subject to receiving materials, as we all know about the supply chain issues. And work should be completed either prior to the start of or early in this 22, 23 school year. So the cost that GRP has proposed is a fixed cost of $1,604,540. They will then apply for an AMRIN grant on our behalf, which they fully expect to get, their estimate is $107,000, and I'm pretty sure they've estimated that on the low side. So the net cost to the district would be just under 1.5 million. Now, we tried to estimate annual electricity just for lighting. So if you think about it, we have a lot of outlets, all of the HVAC systems, all those fans are electric. So it's only a certain percentage for lighting. But we're going to see a savings, we should see a savings of about 62% on anything related to lighting. And so that would, that would give 100,000 to 130,000 annual savings on our energy costs. And so the cost of about, well, we didn't even take into account the AMRIN grant. On 1.6 million, we'd, that would get paid back in 12 to 15 years, based on the savings that we anticipate. Prop S budget for lighting upgrades is 2.65 million, so that's good news. We're way under budget. Again, we have four smaller buildings, this building, Husky Academy and Support Services building. And then we want to do Husky Support Center, but we wouldn't use Prop S funds for that. But we'll bring those back later. The guaranteed savings per the contract is about $109,000 a year for 15 years. So it was going to be next week at our regular, next regular meeting, I'll recommend that the board approve a contract for the fixed cost of that 1.6 million from GRP Wegman for LED lighting installation and upgrades. And I'll try to answer any questions.
You don't want it, you don't want it to go tonight?
Again, the board's procedures are that we present once and you guys approve it later. So, but the board has the.
So we're now not meeting on the 21st?
We click that back.
We're not going, yeah, we don't have a meeting on the 21st.
No, I said, we were going to, at our next regular meeting.
I saw that.
Do you want to follow the board's procedures? The board is free to do whatever you'd like.
Well, the question, the things that come to my mind with all this is, and I've learned this very brutally this week as I tried to order things for my class. The lead time for things is horrible. Horrible is the word. If I was out working in industry, I'd probably be fired, because I'd be going to my plant manager saying, I can't get these parts. Because the lead times are terrible. And in knowing that, the sooner we can approve this, and I'm going to make the motion to do so, the sooner that they can start ordering these parts. Because God knows what the lead time might be. They might be able to get them all tomorrow morning. And if they don't, it might be three months.
Yes. Bob and Maya expect two to three weeks, but again, you never know what's going to happen.
So with that said, I want to make the motion, I recommend that the Board of Education approve the contract for the fixed cost of $1,604,540 from GRP Wegman for LED lighting installation and upgrades.
Do we have to make a motion and not follow our program?
Oh, no. No, it's not policy, it's just your procedure.
Just our procedures, okay.
Second. Any other questions?
Do we, do we foresee any, like rewiring or any kind of hard wiring that must change for any of this?
Just in the immediate area, and there is new wiring associated with adding motion detection in the classroom areas, but it's minor in nature relative to things. It's not rewiring the buildings by any sense of impagination.
What about, and I know we're going to drop down the amount of amperage that we draw per circuit. Would then, for safety, would we have to change the breakers that support this?
No, you know, it just makes the circuitry oversize for the load in hand, and it makes it better as far as that. It also reduces your cooling load.
Oh, absolutely.
So it's a win-win situation.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Bob, simply cut out, cut the old ballast, put a new ballast in for LED and switch the bulbs?
Is that correct?
No.
We eliminate having a ballast. So that's another big maintenance item. Not only do the lamps last a lot longer, you're eliminating the ballast, which you no longer need, on the retrofitted fixtures. And then on the new fixtures outside, you can't retrofit outside fixtures, so all those would be brand new. Those are going to be a longer lead item. So those would be done more likely in the summer and when little kids are around and we can use lift trucks in the parking lots and stuff. But the retrofits of getting the lamps and doing that, we can get those quicker. And we hope to start, you know, two or three weeks down the road. Kind of fingers crossed, but we could start on second shift, doing that work. And you're not a small district. There's a lot of man-hours associated with this. We would love to start as early as possible.
And on the, in the parking lots, if everyone, anyone's gone over to crats, you know, when we added that new addition to the parking lot, the LED lights, that, those are great.
Yep.
I wish we could do something like that in front of parking lot.
Yes, we'll be looking at that to see if we need any more. But of course, though, what we have will be brighter because there'll be new fixtures. But we'll, I'll make sure they look at that.
That's like being out in daylight over there, crats.
Will the motion stuff just be the classrooms, or is it going to be the parking lots, too?
No, it'll just be the classrooms, the motion sensors.
Just in the classroom, just in the question.
Classrooms, offices, like?
Oh, I'm sorry, offices, too?
Just the classrooms.
Just the classrooms, okay. Okay, any other questions? Are we ready for a vote?
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Long?
Yes.
Ms. DeGardner?
Yes.
Ms. Silverco?
Ms. Silverco?
I do have a question, sorry.
Can I ask my, um, another one?
So in the classroom, I only ask this because we just read it in my kitchen. And I have this motion thing in my kitchen that is great from night to morning. But then, when I'm sitting there in the daytime and I have it on, it goes off if I'm not moving. Is the classroom going to be like that? Have you ever seen a teacher be able to go put away a light?
Yes, yes, so the teacher can either move or they can go hit the switch again. But the thing is, is it's going to be set for 30 minutes probably. All we want it to do is if somebody leaves the room and forgets to turn it off, it eventually goes off.
Okay.
If you don't have any motion in a classroom in 30 minutes,
That kid's falling asleep.
I would say something isn't right. But yes, they can go for that.
Okay, just making sure.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, oh, yes.
And Ms. Enric, is she in the book?
Yes.
And I also vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, George.
Ruth is really good. Step away from her.
Ruth, you need to move a little bit more in the kitchen, too.
Right, don't go anywhere, right.
I'm telling you.
Moving to 5.10, budget update. Mr. Dwight Lindhorst.
Thank you. You'd be tired of me, I know.
They can't already.
Never.
I was going to say.
Yes, as long as you show us the dollars, we're good, right?
Right.
All right. Okay, again, we cannot reach our vision or mission without sufficient resources. And for finance, this means allocating resources based on student need instead of equals per building. So this, this is our current year budget. You can see how we started out and the changes we made. As you know, we have added a lot of personnel and supports this year. And so most of that, those expenditures are those, along with just updating grants and then related revenue. So we've talked about budget recapture before. That's the amount, the percentage we spend under what the budget is. You can see the last three years were fairly high. Those were fairly unusual when you compare it to the last, the five years before that, where it was an average of 2.45% recapture, a range of 1.3 to 3.3. So conservatively, I'm saying we should have a budget recapture at least of $2 million, which is 2.57% of this year's budget. So when you add that back in, you can see that we'd have a surplus of about 2.4 million and a healthy fund balance. So the process, our next year's budget so far, we've received and reviewed all the school and department budgets. We're finalizing staffing positions, and then we'll review all the special considerations for what people have asked to be added after we summarize revenue expenditures and see where we are. So for next year's budget, again, this 2022 is not a reassessment year. I anticipate flat revenue. Actually, I'm hoping for flat revenue as we think more about personal property and the car rental fleets up on Natural Bridge. I'm afraid that many of them are going to be lower fleets than they had last year. But hopefully, you know, they've paid a lot more for their cars than like everybody else has, so hopefully it'll even out. State sales tax, Prop C is going great in Missouri. It just continues to increase. We got a memo, our March memo, that said they were going to appropriate a lot more per kit per ADA, average daily attendance, sorry. And so based on that, I'm expecting at least 1.2 million more this year than what we budgeted.
Is that part of the 2 million that you showed earlier?
No, the 2 million is simply budget recapture. That's spending less than the budget. So that 1.2 is not in there yet.
Okay.
And so we expect more money per average daily attendance next year, too. And so does, I mean, so does Desi's school finance. Basic formula, legislature's committed to fully fund it, and as you heard, Dr. Gilbert, they have plenty of money, so they can afford it. However, it's the same state adequacy target as this year. They're not increasing it. Good news, just the other day, Desi's determined that COVID-19 has had a significant impact on student attendance.
Really?
Really? And so they implemented a section of the law that allows them to include 19, 20 attendance in determining weighted average daily attendance for next year's formula. Normally, it's the greater of the previous two years or what you are putting in as an estimate for this year. Now it'll be the greater of the last three years. And so that is great news for us, because it will maintain pretty level funding. Before I told you that our ADA would drop and we'd probably see a decrease of. As far as expenditures go for next year, as you know, salary increases, we have a 5% average. Plus, we increased minimum wage for child nutrition and custodians to $15 an hour. Expecting very slight increase in health insurance. Everything's going great, way under the industry average. And very slight or flat amounts of premiums in dental vision and life. So again, we added resources this year to address learning loss, social emotional concerns, and related behavior issues due to the pandemic. We'll continue to review those prior to bringing you the final budget in June and ongoing throughout next year, because the administration, I believe the board, is committed to providing needed support to students and staff.
So can I just put this in there? So with that being said, in our budget, are we including the fact of extending summer school? The amount of teachers that we are having for summer school? The fact that we're going to have a lot more kids in summer school this year? So is that all included in there already?
That will be included.
Are you still serving on the committee with EdPlus for the insurance?
Yes, I'm, yes, I'm chair trustee.
Yeah, okay. Just curious.
All right, any other questions?
There you go.
Thank you. Still have?
All right, last one.
5.11, Proposition S update.
So this is just an update on the projects that we planned and told voters about when we went out for Proposition S. And again, same thing about facilities. So this is helping us maintain and improve our facilities. So here are projects that we have completed, either right after the bond issue passed, the summer of 2020, into the fall. And last year, these were the low-hanging fruit, easy projects to get finished quickly. So tuck pointing at our schools is needed badly. This summer, we've already awarded contracts for all six elementary schools and Ritter High School. Frankly, it was too much work to do the whole district at once. And so we'll do the middle schools next summer in 2024. The Ritter High School Fitness Center, this year, the board's already approved a contract for, to abate the asbestos in the current maintenance at the custodial storage area, which is where the fitness center will be housed. And for anyone that went to school there very long ago, it was the old caf, the original cafeteria. So the steering committee has reviewed the needs and the wants.
The shop.
It was a shop, though.
It was.
It was shop, but it was the cafeteria first before they added that on, in the 60s.
Mr. Cooper.
Yep.
So we got back a ways, but not, not that far, right?
Mm-hmm, right.
Thanks, thanks, pal.
So the steering committee reviewed.
I only know because I have a lot of older brothers. That's the only reason.
Oh, okay, all right.
I have a lot of older brothers that graduated from it.
We reviewed the needs and the wants for the facility. We visited three other school facilities, so that design is progressing. And we plan on doing all of those renovations in the summer of 2023. So all the abatement will take place this, this summer, so we'll be all ready to roll.
So we're going to wait a whole other school year before we start doing any renovations to it?
We have to, because we can't, we can't, we don't have any room for maintenance at custodial to go. because they're gonna take over the old, the current weight room. So we have to, we have to do everything. So, it's gonna be a lot of planning and it's gonna get knocked out in the summer.
The summer?
No, summer of twenty twenty-three. Only thing happening this summer is we're abating the floors and ceilings. And it'll be all ready to go and we'll have HVAC, new HVAC units ordered. And I'll have.
It'll only take about six months to be here. Well, that's.
Yeah, that's why we're gonna order them. That's why we'll get you a contract. If for nothing else, we'll order.
Equipment ahead of time. Dwight, what's the quoted lead time on HVAC for this project?
Twenty, twenty to twenty-four weeks, right, Bob?
Depends on the system we end up with.
Yeah, depends on.
But it's still be the process.
So, is the other weight room gonna stay intact until?
Yes.
Yes.
Because it's used as a PE, it's not just used as athletics, so that's why we can't, we can't do anything until we. I'm sorry. High school cafeteria renovation, we looked at, we developed some options, reviewed with building administration, and we're gonna finalize that design this summer. And again, renovations will be planned for next summer. That has HVAC implications also. Lighting and energy, the board just approved that contract, thank you. And that will be, that'll happen May to August, maybe into September. HVAC replacements and upgrades, RMS chiller replaces planned next month. That's already had a slight delay. And at the high school, then four rooftop units on the cafeteria, two rooftop units on the administration offices. These are high priority, they're very old units, that is planned for this fall. And then, all of the other HVAC priority items will be replaced as we can get that designed and the equipment can be obtained within those supply chain constraints. All the other miscellaneous projects that you see here, we'll be combining them into one contract or project for each school through the contract with GRP Wegman. We can combine these into one item. And so, each school, as we do HVAC upgrades, we'll do all these other things that we said we were gonna do in the school.
So these main entries are like the safety that will be put in, like how we have island setup?
Yes, so island and whalen are the perfect examples. Pretty much everywhere else, Kratz and Marvin and Marion, Hank. And then Booter, we have to decide where we're going with the actual entrance because obviously, the one now is not ADA. So we're gonna see if we can make that one ADA, otherwise, we may go down apparently where the entrance used to be. So, you know, everything comes back, doesn't it?
So when is that, when are those planned?
So those wouldn't be until summer of twenty-three or twenty-four. We've got a lot to do next summer, so we'll have to see, yeah, twenty-three or twenty-four. I'm hoping that everything can be, get done by twenty-four. But I'm not promising.
And what's the reconfiguring of the main entry that?
So that's what we were just talking about, like Kratz, it has a, you know, the office is way up here, you have to go up steps. Nobody can, we want the office right at the main door for security, safety and security, and to greet people. So, we have to, we have to move the office, move the main entrance.
Okay, so this is just for one school?
Uh, could be multiple.
No, there were, like, four that we know we need to move the entrance. Marion is, you know, a little ways in, Marvin is, is a little ways in, you have to go in the building. So, all of those things, we're, we're gonna fix so that the offices are right in front.
The high school's a little daunting for, you know?
Yes.
But I, I don't know.
Well, that one, that's okay because we actually have the welcome desk.
Yeah.
So it's not, we're just trying to prevent people from walking in the building and having free range for whatever, hundred, hundred and three feet.
You know how when you walk in the island, you go in and there's glass right there, but then to the right, it's the doors to go into the office.
Yeah, you can't get into the rest of the building.
So you can't get into the rest of the school. Correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you're left.
Yeah.
Same with Marion, you can go in, it's very, very.
Yes. That's my report, do you have any questions?
Dwight, are we doing anything to showcase the completed projects to the community?
So there is a report on the website. It's a Prop S update that goes through basically all of this, everything that was promised by school and when that was completed. Many of those things aren't real flashy, I mean, they're playgrounds, glass pads. And, you know, we replaced security cameras and we painted lockers. So, you know, but, you know, we can, we can see what communications can do, but, yeah, we do have the update on the website.
Yeah, because I think it's, I was at the meeting where you all had that for the community, you were explaining Prop S and all of that. So it's just, it's awesome to see that some of those things that you were talking about actually happened. So I think even just do like a before and after picture or something, you know?
Are you including your state of Rittenham?
That's what I'm gonna say, it's gonna be in our state of Rittenham, it's probably the meeting you're talking about.
And also, the board conversation around the signage that will be placed in each of the school lawns. We've already talked with Doug's team. And so, the thinking is, once those tuck pointing projects start and it's visible, that's when we have those signs that could start going in the, in the schoolyards.
I have one big question is, is how are we doing on the budget of everything, especially since we went for Prop S? Then, everything changed and supplies costs is up and.
We're doing good, especially now with the lighting is under budget. And you know, we were looking at over budget for tuck pointing, so we're looking good.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions?
I did, I have one question about the, these steering committees.
Yes.
Are they all adult representation or do we have student voice in any of these spaces? Because we're assigning spaces for students.
So the steering committee, so there were two different, there were actually, yeah, there were two different committees for the fitness center. There was a steering committee made up of adults. And then, there was a, I can't remember what Mike called it, but there was another committee that he had teachers and students and parents on. And, and they went through the same process, developing needs and wants. And basically, they were almost identical, everybody wants the same thing.
Same thing with cafeterias?
Cafeteria, we have not, we have not done that as much, no. The fitness center, we have.
Yeah, I think we need to do that with the cafeteria because the students are the ones that have to be in that space. And a lot of times, the environment that people are in, colors, all of that influence how people, you know, act in those spaces.
We will try, I will tell you that it's much, the cafeteria is gonna be a much, it's a much more constrained area and so, we don't have as much, I mean, the fitness center is basically a big box and how do we want it to look and what do we want it to include? We don't have the budget to go in and rip out everything in the cafeteria and start over. So, it's just, it's gonna be a different project, but we can certainly do that. And I'll talk to Dr. Haywood to get some student reps. Once we, once we figure out, once we come to a, a design that everybody else agrees on and see what they think. And then, interior finishes are certainly something that we could, that we could change regarding student taste. The whole point, the whole goal that we have is to modernize the cafeteria, make it look new, modern, and someplace that students wanna be. And can be, and that the administration can easily supervise.
And not tan.
And not what?
Tan. They call it tan.
And not what?
No tan.
Not brown, not tan.
Not tan or brown?
Oh, not beige, what you mean.
Tan, brown, beige, whatever color.
I agree.
Just something engaging.
Yes.
Yes, engaging.
I think that'll be a good conversation to start with, our new student rep.
Yes.
Yes.
Definitely.
There you go.
Um, Dr. Haywood did do an email today regarding cafeteria staff, one of staff with the cafeteria foods, and then the environment. I know, I heard a few concerns about the food, we do not like the food at all. The options that were given, I won't say they're limited, but they're repeated. I would also say that sometimes, we have four lunches now, we added another one, and the food is cold, I hear that a lot. But as far as the environment of cafeteria, it's, it can be a real issue.
Sounds like you wanna be on that committee?
I would love to.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You may go back to your regular.
Thank you.
Moving to five point one two, personnel recommendations, Dr. Michael Chance.
Good evening, board members.
Good evening, please.
I'm here to present items one through fifty-six for your approval. I'm open to any questions or comments you may have.
Yeah. So I had a question, we've got a lot of movement at one of my middle schools in addition to new leadership in that space. So what plan do we have in place to support all of this movement?
So, we have spoken with teachers requesting movement. We're in conversation with Alex Terrence as well as the assistant principal. And Alex has met with many of the teachers who were requesting movement as well. We've also had movement, if you may notice, we also have movement from elementary schools to other elementary schools this year. And elementary schools, one elementary person to hate as well this year, as well as movement from Rittenham Middle to high school this year, which is somewhat new for Rittenham. Typically, teachers have reported that they have feared retribution of some kind by requesting movement in the district. This is anecdotally what they have shared. But they're starting to feel more open to have that conversation with building leadership and expressing a need for a change when they feel like they would like a change. And so, they reach out to me and we talk about it and they apply, go through the application process. They don't give a screening interview, but they do sit down and talk with their principal and the principal where they're applying to and sometimes with people. To answer your question more specifically, we are, so some of the expressions of staff members is, I need a change and if I, and I really wanna stay in the district. However, if I'm not able to make a change, and I understand it may not work out, then I'm going to leave the district just for the sake of needing a change. So, they're having conversations that Alexandra has had with the staff regarding scheduling for next year, regarding the overall schedule. And he is working with the committee of teachers already and the assistant principals for identifying new staff to interview and join the building. We do know that we intend to have additional meetings with them to talk about additional supports for Hake. Some of that is related to that retention grant, we assume some of that is gone. Based on what you're noticing, that retention grant allows us to begin to add additional supports next year in terms of teachers' aides to support teachers in the building. So, we're looking to begin those conversations next week to talk about. And those are unique positions that typically don't post this time of year because they're non-contracted employees. And, and to be quite honest, we could hire them now and then by June or July, they could find another position. So we typically post them in June or July.
Part of the conversation also is not just this year, but we looked back the prior two years and the amount of transition in a specific middle school. And we've seen that over the last, the prior two years also, there's been a number of transitions from that building also. So, this year thirteen, I believe last year was eleven, and the year prior was consistent. So significant turnover over time in the staff in that building.
Yes, particularly in comparison to, Rittenham Middle has had less.
So are we working to make sure that we're aligning those practices between the two? Because some things work, I mean, obviously, that's gonna be a good point with who's going over there.
Yeah, yes, yeah, so I think the more aligned, the two schools can be, the better. There's been a good bit of shifting when you take a look at some of the transitions out. Large number of, two years ago, was the year twenty twenty is the year that a lot of the staff are coming on board with this two years, making the decision to explore other options. I think it's also a function of the pandemic, you know, the last three years were impacted by the pandemic. Nineteen twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two is playing a role. But there has been significant turnover in the building after each of the last three years.
When they resign, do they tell you where they're going and do you call their bluff?
Not always, no.
Okay.
So I ask. And sometimes, sometimes people won't respond to me, so they will respond to the principal or to Lenny Jackson sometimes. But we try all avenues. And to be honest, this year, and I think some people have been honest, they said, I don't know, that I'm gonna do something different with my life. Or they said, I've had some younger teachers say, I don't know, but my dad tells me I need to get out and do something different because education is struggling now, so I'm gonna do something different. Someone recently told me I'm gonna go back to school and be a nurse because education is stressful. Nursing, I know, is also stressful. Talk with them about that.
Nursing's that stressful a lot.
Try to counsel them on that. But they don't always tell us. I try to be as transparent as I know on this report. Some of these shifted a little bit today when we got more information about where people intended to go and do. But I do follow up with them in May with an exit survey and an opportunity to talk with us again. And sometimes by then, I'll get more clear information after some time has passed.
I will say, when I first got on the board many years ago, a lot of teachers did switch around, you know? Like, as I got to know my kids, they'd say, oh, you know, like in middle school, they'd say, oh, I taught at Kratz for X many years and then I came up here. So, I know it's not unusual for them to switch, you know, like that, but.
I just remember when I was a principal, teachers would call me and they'd wanna switch. And I would say, I'm open to talking with you, have you talked to your principal yet? And they'd say, no, I'm fearful of doing that. We'd talk about that, how to manage that.
Yeah.
You know, just trying to create a space where people are comfortable sharing what they feel like they need to change.
I think you switched several different times.
I did.
And there's, we're members, there's always interviews that happen. So if a teacher wants to pursue a transfer, the new building, the teams interview the candidates to check for fit, for quality and all those things.
Are we seeing a lot of teachers coming here from specific school districts or anything? I noticed some from Riverview of Hazelwood, is that a ongoing trend?
I would say that, that we have over the recent years seen more candidates from Hazelwood. I do think we get quite a bit of candidates from Hazelwood. And they often have experienced very similar professional development that we're going through and they can speak to that. And they often speak of having high value for Rittenham and really wanting to join the Rittenham team. I do, I don't see quite as many applicants from Ferguson Floresen, but I do see more from Hazelwood as just an interesting piece. And I think that there have been some recently from Riverview and some of them have had prior experiences in the district as subs or teachers. So, you know, when they find an opportunity to come back, they come back. We've been Rittenham grads and they come back. I do, I do see some of that trend in yes or singles public or even, you know, I tend to see more from a few charter schools compared to other charter schools for whatever reason.
One other question, one of the sessions I went to talked about growing your own as far as bilingual teachers.
Yeah, dual.
Yeah, right, they had such a demand and of course, like, like everybody else, can't, can't meet that demand. So they start having incentives for people that wanted to learn a second language. They didn't specify exactly what language that was because like us, they have multiple languages to approach here. But as we would grow our own as far as teachers concerned, they're giving incentives to the teachers to go back and learn another language. Are you finding anyone that applies?
So we have two, we have two candidates in here that are married. So we have two, we have two candidates in here that are Maryville graduates that Maryville is offering a minor in Spanish simultaneously, which spent thirty credit hours in Spanish to get some level of fluency. And typically, they've had Spanish throughout their, you know, high school experience too. So, you know, they speak to, they chose that specifically to help them as a teacher interact with Spanish speaking students. So there are two candidates within the recommendation tonight. I know that we're positioning also to offer more Spanish courses within the district as part of our PD plan, as well as offer a stipend for staff members who have some level of proficiency in speaking Spanish and really have talked about through that retention grant, an additional thousand dollar stipend if they not just show proficiency, but also agree to use that to engage with parents and engage with students during the school year. So typically, and from time to time, we do, we do ask that question upon application. Do you speak a language other than English? If so, what is, what is the language? And there are also, there are candidates in here that do speak other languages.
Very good.
Yeah.
Very good.
One of the classes I went to, they go to Puerto Rico and Spain to give Spanish speaking teachers.
Yeah, you know, we're working on connecting at Arizona State and New Mexico, and we're struggling to build that connection. That's been something we've been after much harder this year, so we hope to bring that to reality.
I've never been to Puerto Rico.
I have.
Dear to recruit.
Madam President, I move that we accept recommendations one through fifty-four as provision. Fifty-six. I slipped the digit.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Enrico Splinbov?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I'm excited about number thirty-nine.
Yes.
I think that was a good choice there. Keep going, you'll get there.
Yes. She's very excited.
Yes.
Ms. Liver Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Lomas?
Yes.
Mr. Garden?
Yes.
And I also vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Jones. Thank you for your work. Moving to five point one three, board member comments. Does anybody on the board wish to share any comments for this evening?
Yeah, I'm telling you that I am excited about two of the programs that I took out there and I wanna say, I told Chris we're doing them. They're very good. One has, has to do with the McKinney Bento and the other one has to do with podcasting by the superintendent, which will be a great way to get the word out about what's going on.
I got a question. There's a lot of, lack of structure work and everything going on on Central Rockwood, all over the place. And everything, and, and we're past a while back about a new sign for Rittner High School. How is, what's, what's the, the thing with the sign? Okay, when can we see that installed and with all this work and everything? Is, is the construction on the, on the road sidewalks, I mean, is that gonna be a problem?
I don't believe the construction on the sidewalks and roads is gonna be an issue. Dwight, do we have an, an update on the, the sign when it's gonna be?
No, they're building it and it's just slow because of the change, slicing. So we haven't gotten an update, just.
But they are for the staffs like that, I mean, staff like.
Yeah, I, I think that'd be great if we had that up by, by fall for the, over beginning of school.
I agree.
So many.
I agree.
But there, yeah, just, just to reiterate out there, NSBN, I wish, I wish everybody could have joined us. There were, there were so many good sessions to go to. I went to several on growing your own, I went to several on equity. How, how do you make, and my, my concern is, is we read our vision statement, our mission statement, then we read an equity statement and that's, that's it. I wanted to see how districts put meat into their equity statement, put it in as far as the day to day part of the school district, and if there's good ideas in that. Other than that, it was, it was good to do with the group.
Yeah, I think it has. It seems like everybody learned a lot on that trip too, which is good. This, this truly the first time that it's been back in person for an SBA, very uncomfortable.
Next year, April first, February third, yeah.
All right, does anybody else have anything to share? Any good? All right. We'll move to the consent agenda. And move that we approve consent agenda items six point oh one through six point oh seven.
Second.
Any questions? All right, Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Lomas?
Yes.
Mr. Garden?
Yes.
Ms. Liver Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Bellperko?
Yes.
Ms. Enrico Splinbov?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Moving to closed session?
We're going to close session.
Okay, all right, Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Lomas?
Yes.
Mr. Garden?
Yes.
Ms. Bellperko?
Yes.
Ms. Bellperko?
Yes.
Ms. Enrico Splinbov?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. We'll move into closed session, we'll take a five minute break in between while we got everything all set together.